Welcome to the Peak News. I'm Hi, I'm Goldman the Watchman. You're listening to AM 1460 and FM 101.1 The Answer. Welcome to Thursday. This is our Education and Media Day. And today we're focusing in on education. We invite you, if you want to watch radio on video, we are streaming on Facebook. So you can go to Facebook and the Peak News Media is our channel on there, our page on there, and also streaming to YouTube at the Peak Media. So if you want to see what we look like, come on. Because here at the Peak, we say the quiet stuff out loud. And I don't know if we looked apart, but you can leave that. I will leave that up to you. I want to give a shout out to all of our sponsors who pay the bills around here, who bring this great service to you of independent journalism, grassroots citizen journalism here in the Pike's Peak region, which is proving to be more and more important as we find out about all the things that the media doesn't touch in this region. And I guess other places, but I only really care about here where we live, because this is where we can make a difference. And if we don't get proper information, if we don't get good data, how can we make good decisions in our lives, for our family, for our businesses, for our whole community? So we decided, this scrappy grassroots project, to get on the radio and podcast and to say the quiet stuff out loud and to talk about the things that aren't being talked about and to encourage you to be part of it, to not be a passive listener, but to be active and to be a citizen journalist or a tech or an intern or a guest and of course a sponsor. And you can go on the peak.news for all that info. And I'm going to give a shout out now to our platinum sponsors, Springs Dentist and Dr. Craig Summer, Holistic Dentistry in Colorado Springs. They're our family dentist, actually. Had my teeth cleaned there just a couple of days ago. They're feeling great. So go check out Dr. Craig Summers and Springs Summer and Springs Dentist, especially if you're looking for natural holistic dentistry. Very, very cool. So what are we doing here today? Well, don't know if you heard, you should have. You're paying attention, definitely if you're in the D-11 area for schools. It's the past couple of weeks, it's been pretty controversial over there at the school board meetings, because the board was considering ending a 60-year agreement, master agreement with the teachers' union there. And of course, that's highly contested. I believe that there's, it's the only school district in El Paso County that is a part of the teachers' union. And it's controversial. You know what, are the teachers' union good for education? Definitely good for the teachers, because it's a union representing them. But people wonder whether it's good for education. And last night, the school board voted, I believe it was six to one?
Yes.
Six to one to end the master agreement. It didn't happen last night, but moving into a process to do that. And we figured, you know, who would know more about this than the school board members who had to make this decision or going to be dealing with this and figuring out how to implement it? And so we have on the program today, two D-11 school board members. The, is it president or chair or what do you?
President.
President of the school board, Parth. And is it Mel Packham? I'm always, I know, I know you know that people have issues with you, have problems with you, but I'm getting it right. Parth Mel Packham and Jill Hayfley.
Yep.
Okay, got that right. You know, this is hard. I gotta write things phonetically here. And we're going to be talking, spending this time over the course of the hour regarding their controversial decision last night to not renew this collective bargaining agreement with the teachers' union. So Parth and Jill, thanks so much for being on the Peak.
Thank you for inviting us to be part of your show.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
So what are we doing here today? We're going to be talking about that. Different issues regarding education, we'll do in our headline segment. Parth is going to be sharing with us about vision in the school, in the D-11 school board, what they've been able to accomplish and what they want to. And Jill, as we get toward the end of the hour, we'll be talking about this decision, a concern regarding cell phones and other devices in schools. And you know, is it something that should be banned? Is it, is it good for the students? Is it good for education? What do you think? So you're here listening to the Peak during our Education Day. Whether or not you have students in the school system, whether or not you homeschool, like I do, I tell people, you really need to be concerned about education and how it's being done, because these, these youth are going to grow up and be part of our society. If you homeschool, guess what? They're going to be with your homeschoolers as they grow to be adults in this society. So we don't want to check out of that. And also, man, there's a lot of money, a lot of tax money that's being spent on these decisions that are being made by your school board members. So be an active listener here today. Learn about the teachers' union and get involved, because hey, it's our community here. I'm Hi, I'm Goldman the Watchman. You're listening to the Peak. And we'll be right back talking about education, especially in D-11. Okay.
That was good.
Good, good, good setup, ready to go.
Yep.
We have people, people, hi, if you're joining us on the live stream.
So that was good.
Hey. Brett Stevens. I heard she's working here.
I wanted to give her a hug for a long, long time. How are you? It's good to see you.
Well, it's good to see you, old man.
You know, you know Parth? Parth is president of the school.
Nice to meet you.
Brett Stevens.
Hello. Okay, I'm gonna go listen now, but I wanted to say hi.
It's good to see you.
Neither can I.
No, I mean, the time of day.
Oh, I know, I'm about to leave. That's why I wanted to sneak in and interrupt.
Say hi to your lovely wife for me.
I will.
All right, it's good to see you.
He's been here 18 years, so you were here. Okay, so we're back in about three minutes. So again, I'm going to read just from here. And let's, let's not get into the real issue at this point, but let's talk about the school board meeting, how to go about sort of build up, you know, the controversy of it. But let's, let's not get into the issues so much until we get to the other segment, if that's okay.
We'll follow your lead.
Okay. Yeah, but once you're talking, you know, you can start going somewhere. And then I, then I have to follow your lead.
Well, that's true.
So. So that's, we'll be discussing, so in this next segment, we're discussing this as a news item. You know, what was the meeting about? What happened? Sort of the, you know, the facts of it and, and you know, opinions on either side in a lightweight. And then we'll give you more space to do that. Because it's two people, you're going to have to decide how to buddy team when we get into things.
We do that pretty well.
So, you know, I'll leave that to you. Who's color, who's play by play? You know, things like that. That, that's up to you, just.
You can take the lead.
No, it's all right. You're the president.
I know, but you are the expert.
Expert at what?
Radio.
Please, all it is is talking. Tell me what to say, I'll say it.
Okay.
Okay, so we're on page two now, right?
We're on page two. And we're gonna do this, and then we'll talk about this program providing free college classes.
That's you.
At OutRis. But again, you know, you can, you can just talk about things that you're doing in the district and, you know, helping.
We can talk about the Pike's Peak Promise something.
Okay. Again, a lot of what we do here at the Peak is trying to get people to take their voice back. You know, if we can talk about stuff, they can talk about stuff.
Yeah.
You know, that's, I mean, it's, it's, it's the citizens talking and being involved and the media doing its job and, and reporting on things that should be reporting on. So we have about one more minute till we're back. And Parth, you're gonna want some bullet points for the third segment on District 11 Journey to Excellence. So make sure you got that ready by, not this segment, but the one after. Okay.
Do you do this every day or is it once a week?
Four days, four days a week.
Four days a week?
Plus I do some shows on the Bible teaching and talk.
Different segments.
Right.
Different segments.
Different, it's for a different audience. This is, this is the conservative news talk audience. That's the Bible teaching, you know, top people listen to sermons all day. This is people who listen to, you know, Dennis Prager, Larry Elder, Charlie Kirk. Okay, back in ten. Welcome back to the Peak News. I'm Hi, I'm Goldman the Watchman. You're listening to AM 1460 and FM 101.1 The Answer. Today is Thursday. We do education and media today. Today we're focusing in specifically on education as we have as our guests and co-hosts for the hour, D-11 school board members Parth Mel Packham and Jill Hayfley. Again, Jill, Parth, thanks so much for being here on the Peak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is our headline segment. And let's, let's see what's in the headlines. Oh, D-11 School Board Votes to End Master Agreement with Teachers Union. Do you guys know anything about this? Can you, do you have anything to comment on it? Here, let's see.
We know a little.
A little bit. Okay, this, I'm reading out of the Gazette article. "The School District 11 Board of Education Voted Not to Renew the Master Agreement That Has Been in Place Since 1968 Between Them and the District's Teachers Union, Colorado Springs Education Association During a Heavily Attend Special Meeting Wednesday Evening." "The option not to renew the agreement was added during the most recent bargaining period and discussed by board members and their legal counsel since October. Per the agreement, either the board or union could present a written intention to discontinue it before the third Wednesday in January. The possibility generated a stir of action by parties both in favor and opposed. And at last week's meeting, about 300 union members and other community members gathered outside the board's regular meeting to voice their support for the master agreement." So later on in the program, we're going to be getting more in the nuts and bolts of what the problem that, that you see and why you made this decision. But overall, let's talk about the item itself. What happened last night? How did things go?
Well, I'll start off.
Parth.
The meeting was well attended. We had our teachers, community members and stakeholders in the audience. And we provided opportunities for each one of them to provide a three-minute public comment. And about 30 public comments were received. Some of them supported with the master agreement. Some of them talking about the issues with the master agreement. So the board got to listen to various perspectives that were brought about by our community. We thoughtfully listened to it. We gave consideration and following that, the board had a lengthy discussion among ourselves and then made a decision to vote on the motion that was presented to end the master agreement. And it is set to expire June 30th, 2025.
Jill. Yeah, I want to address something that was said in the Gazette article. I mean, there were a lot of people there. And I was grateful to see as many people as we had, because that speaks so highly of our community, teachers and community, that they are that interested in the inner workings of the school district, that they are willing to come out on a Wednesday evening and give us their, their feedback, their thoughts, their, their why, if you will. One of the things that they said though was, we had until the middle of January to notify the union of whether or not we were going to extend the contract. And then there were, there was some consternation. It's, it's an easy way of saying it.
Is that accurate?
Yeah, we, yes, we, we did have until the middle of January. So then the question is, well, why'd you do it now? Why didn't you wait until the middle of January? And my response to that is, is that there's an enormous amount of time there that people will fill in and make up a narrative about. And we want to make sure that the, that there's no misinformation or at least limit it as much as possible. We want the truth out there. And the reason that we did it now as opposed to waiting until the middle of January.
Last minute.
Right, is because we wanted people to be able to, A, know what was going on, B, be able to prepare. So instead of just dropping something on them at the last minute, and we knew that there was, people were talking in the background. There was, there were a lot of, there's a lot of noise going on. And we wanted to make sure that we had enough respect for our teachers and enough respect for the people in our community and ultimately our students, because we don't want our students to, to suffer at all. So we wanted to tell them, that's what we had come up with. That's what we had decided when we decided it.
And you've been discussing this since October, as it said?
Yeah, the last couple of weeks.
In several executive sessions, we had this discussion. Five executive sessions, the board had thoughtful discussions. Each one of those executive sessions lasting a couple of hours.
Okay. And what was the makeup last night? You know, as far as students, teachers and, you know, people on different sides of the issue? How, what did you see?
I thought it was about half and half. I didn't see any kids there, but there were, there were good numbers of both sides.
Mostly staff and community members in audience, taxpayers, District 11 taxpayers, wanting to share their sentiments about what is transpired in the school district.
Okay, if you've never been to a school board meeting or public meeting, I know, these tend to be, was this held early yesterday? It was?
At 4:00 PM.
Yeah, normally you're at 5:30.
Special meetings usually start at 4:00 PM. So we were following the normal schedule.
Okay. So, you know, I know sometimes you gotta maybe leave work early or change your plans or things like that. But you know, pay attention to what's going on out there, because when these boards just meet in, without community involvement, well, you know, then there's not the accountability. They can't hear from you. They're just, they're just on their own. And so this thing of just, I vote and then, you know, maybe vote again in two years, four years, that's not how things need to work in the local level. So I applaud all the people who took the time to get out there. I used to go to things like that all the time, especially county commissioners meetings. I used to, but now that I'm on the radio every day, this is where I am. And inviting people to come in and talk about it. So later on in the program, we're going to be getting more into the nuts and bolts of why this decision was made, at least by six of the seven school board members, what the issues are at stake. So please stick around for that. But during this headline segment, I wanted to get to, to one other article that I pulled out today regarding education. Program Providing Free College Classes to Fifth-Year High Schoolers Needs Overhaul Report Says, and this is out of, where did I get this report? You know what, it was from a, I think it was, it was from an online education. Yeah, it was a, it was a list of different articles that were sent to me on education. "A Colorado Program That Allows Students to Stay in High School for Fifth Year to Take Free College Classes Should Be Realigned to Focus on Low-Income 'At-Risk' Students." That's just one of several recommendations in a new report meant to address problems with the state's fragmented workforce readiness programs. State lawmakers commissioned the report from a Denver-based slalom consulting firm, which will present its recommendations Wednesday at the Colorado State Board of Education. And so this goes into all of these, which I think are great, whether you call them enrichment programs or extracurricular, to try to be focused more on students being able to come out of high school and have a career or get college credits and things like that. Tell us, you know, what's going on in D-11 regarding programs like that? I know when we had Michael Gull, who's the superintendent of D-11 on here a couple of months ago, he talked about K through 14, you know, getting more than just 12, getting college credits. So share with us, you know, about that. And are there things that you think could use improvement in that area here locally?
Well, one of the things that we have focused on in District 11 is that the kids' education just doesn't stop after high school. We wanted to provide opportunities for kids after graduating from high school. So a couple of years back, in partnership with several of our local philanthropic organizations, we introduced the Pike's Peak Promise Scholarship Program. With that, every high school student that graduates from a D-11 school now has an opportunity to go and attend Pike's Peak State College for two years without having to pay any tutsions. The tuition is taken care of by the school district. So it requires the student to attend and ensure that they maintain their grades at a certain level. And after that, they get two years of free college classes. And I hope our students will take advantage of that. Research shows that even if you take those two years of college classes and get an associate's certification, then you, over the course of your career, end up earning a lot more as opposed to just graduating out of high school.
Okay, Jill, real quick, we've just got about 30 seconds.
I know kids that would not have as enriched life, honestly, post-high school if they, if they don't take advantage of these opportunities. So while they're there, my goodness, you guys take advantage of the things that are being offered to you. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. While you're young, grab a hold of it. Let's go.
Okay, you're listening to the Peak. This is Education Day. We have a couple of members of the D-11 School Board. When we come back, Parth Mel Packham is talking about D-11's journey to excellence. You're listening to the Peak and we'll be right back. Okay, you got three and a half minutes to get ready for your.
Okay.
For your, for your monologue. And I'm going to grab myself water. Do you guys need any water, coffee, anything? And remember, we're still on the live stream.
Yeah, I should have brought my laptop. It's in my trunk right now.
Did you want to run and get it?
No, uh-uh. It'll take me too long. Radio goes really, really quick until it's time to talk. And then it stretches. So.
You are natural, by the way.
Huh?
You are a natural.
Okay.
The way you pull it.
Well. Right, that's my teacher voice. And, and my radio voice, a little bit of both. On Isaac Quanado last week, one of the coaches from Kansas came up to me and put his hands on the table and leaned over right into me. And he said, "You have a big voice." He goes, "What are you doing here? You should be in New York or LA." He said, "You can be my agent." It was fun. But you know, they traveled out here in three of these massive coach-type buses, but they had a big Ford Econo line, like a over-the-road truck as the, as the engine. These things are $350,000 apiece, brand new. And they bought them like that. And so we looked up their school district and what their median income was and how many schools they had. Their median income was like $67,000 something, but they only had 18 schools. I said, "Well, there you go. We've got 53 schools."
Welcome back to the Peak News. I'm Hi, I'm Goldman the Watchman. You're listening to AM 1460 and FM 101.1 The Answer. And no, we're not here to lie to you. That's, that's the regular media that does that. We're here to provide you with information so that you can live your life as a free citizen here. But in order to do that, you gotta do something with it. So we, we don't like passive listeners here. We want you to use this information, plug in, be inspired by those who we bring on here who are doing something and get involved in some sphere. If education's your thing, that's great. If it's media, come join us here. And we have here as our guests and co-hosts for the hour, D-11 school board members Parth Mel Packham and Jill Hayfley. And we're talking about overall, this controversial meeting that happened last night, where the school board of D-11 has decided to not renew the master agreement with the teachers' union. And we're going to be getting into the detail on that in the next segment, so stick around for that. But in this, Parth Mel Packham, the president of the D-11 school board, is talking about D-11's journey to excellence. Parth.
Thank you. This is my sixth year going into serving on the school board. And in 2019, when I ran for the school board, I was extremely concerned about the trajectory of the school district. Our students were underperforming, our schools were underperforming. More than 75% of our students were not at grade level proficiency. And that was alarming to me as a taxpayer and a concerned parent as well. I've got a child that attended D-11 school. So got elected in 2019 and soon after that, we went into the pandemic. And that just was further exacerbated our problem, because most of our schools went into online and hybrid education. So coming out of the pandemic, our students, the academic gaps was far, far, far wider. And 15 of our schools were identified by the state on the state watch list. So that means that those schools were underperforming. And 80% of our kids were not at grade level proficiency. So a new board came into place and that board went with the priority of improving student outcomes. That was, became the priority. We ended up hiring the superintendent who aligned with our mission and vision. And over the past two years, we've done, we've accomplished incredible growth and achievement for our students. Two years back, 15 of our schools were priority improvement or turnaround schools on the state watch list. Today, we have three schools on the state watch list. We want to make sure that those schools are zero going into next year. Our district performance framework has improved by almost four and a half percentage points from last year to this year. And we are moving in the right trajectory, providing our students with the opportunities that they can succeed. Our staff, we increased the staff teacher salary, starting teacher salary from $41,000 to $50,000. And that has resulted in more of, more of our teachers choosing to stay in District 11. And we are also able to recruit more teachers to come and stay with us. And the CTE opportunities, career technology, education opportunities for our kids have exploded since then. The academic pathways, the STEM programs and the IB curriculum programs have also provided plenty of opportunities for our students. We've also set aside $100 million for the renovation of Palmer High School, which is the school right in the middle of our school district. So I want to, I am proud of the accomplishments that the district has made over the last couple of years. And we are, our trajectory is moving upwards. Considering where we were two years back and where we are right now, I am thankful for all the accomplishments that we have made. And the future is bright for District 11 going forward.
What do you think's been the biggest challenge as a school board member that you've, that you've had?
Coming into the school board, the biggest concern I had was the lack of accountability in the school system. And there was a culture of mediocrity that was permeating our school district. And the culture was that every few years, we ended up losing students from our schools. Enrollment numbers dropped and we had to end up closing schools. That has turned around. We have brought accountability back into the system.
Okay, you're, we're just listening to Parth Mel Packham, president of the D-11 Colorado Springs School Board. We're also here for the hour with Jill Hayfley, another school board member. And when we come back, we're getting into why you're here. Well, why is it that the D-11, after all of these years working with the teachers' union, has decided to end that relationship? I'm Hi, I'm Goldman the Watchman. We'll be right back.
Goes back very quickly once you start talking.
It does. Radio's quick. That's why we talk quick and we just, we keep clicking along. It's the format, but it's, it's wonderful, because it's immediate. And it's, and it's easy to do. It's just voice, so you can, can make decisions on the fly. It's not like, I come from a video production background where it's like, you gotta get visuals and you gotta, you know, radio, it's like, hey, do we have, do we have an idea? Do we have a concept? Do we have someone on the phone?
Yeah, for sure.
Get them on the air. So it's the most immediate medium.
You don't take calls?
No. It's, it's our, if we ever get to a second hour, we would do that. But it's, it's such a tightly packed show. And it's also hit or miss with calls. But I understand why people who have two, three, four-hour shows fill the space with that. But we don't have that. No, we're better than that. We, we invite people to come be reporters. Come join us. Come, you know, come on the air and tell your story. Don't just call in with an opinion. So, yeah.
Right, right. Good.
We're doing that. And when you're, and after the show, if you can stick around a little bit, wanted to let you know, since we're looking to put a, we have a nonprofit, we're putting a journalistic ethics and media vocational programming. We've been talking to Michael Gull about, about getting it into schools. So I wanted to fill you in on that. So I wanted to fill you in on that.
Oh, fantastic.
So that we can raise up a generation of actual journalists, not activists, like people who understand, know your personal opinion has to, you know, you gotta, you gotta do your job.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And get them before they're indoctrinated. So. Okay, we're back in about 15 seconds. So you'll decide how you're gonna bounce it back and forth, but you know.
You start off.
Yeah, you start off.
Okay.
That's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
Welcome back to the Peak News. It's Education Day here at the Peak. I'm Hyam Goldman, the Watchman. You're listening to AM 1460 and FM 101.1, The Answer. And we have D11 School Board members Parth Malpakam and Jill Hayfley. And in this segment, we're going to take a deeper dive into, well, what happened last night and why did it happen? But before we do that, let's start with you, Jill. What, how, what's your background? How did, how did you end up as a D11 School Board member?
Well, I was a D11 teacher for 29 of my 30 years in the classroom. I was a high school US History and Government teacher.
Oh, wonderful.
And right around COVID, that particular school board, that was a couple of school boards ago, they made some interesting decisions that affected classroom teachers and kids in the classroom. And I didn't care for those decisions very much and I, I was relatively vocal. And I had gone to board meetings and participated in public comment. And then people started asking me if I had any interest in running for the School Board. And it was not on my radar. And I retired from the classroom in 2023 and took about a month to decide whether or not I was gonna do this. And I got a lot of support from my family and my friends. And, and so I decided to go ahead and follow that and I'm glad I did. It's been, it's been really interesting. It was totally different than what I thought it was going to be, but not, not in a bad way. It's, it's been really great.
Parth, what's your background?
Mine is a little bit different background. I grew up in India. And I come from a family where my family struggled to put food on the table. Education was prioritized as the way to get out of the poverty that I found my, my family found themselves in. And here I am after graduation, out there with a bachelor's degree in chemical and petroleum engineering. I came to United States to pursue my masters and doctorate. I've got a doctorate in chemical and petroleum engineering. Worked in the oil companies for 20-plus years. And as my daughter started attending public schools, I got involved in her education just as much as my parents got involved in my education and was really concerned and worried about the education she was receiving. And got involved and advocated for the best education for our kids. And the only way that I could make a difference, I soon realized, was that I had to jump into the administrative, the leadership role that comes with being a board member. Boards end up deciding how the education is provided for our kids. And it's been an interesting journey so far and we've made a difference. The past five years that I've spent on the board, we've come a long way and I'm proud of it.
True. Thank you. Well, last night, the board made a decision, six to one, to discontinue the master collective bargaining agreement with the Teachers Union. So it's the only, in El Paso County, the only school district with a Teachers Union. And it's been, you know, controversial. Are they, are Teachers Unions overall good for education or are they not? I guess you're deciding that they're not. But can you, can you give us some background for those of us who sort of just hear about things, but you, you were into it and had to study it and make this decision? You know, what is it about Teachers Unions that you don't think is the best for D11? Why, what are the issues?
So, so I've, I've got a few that I can bring up. Before I even get into that, what, what I want to point out is that the Colorado Springs Education Association is a private corporation, if you will. There's no public accountability with that. We are accountable to the public because we're elected officials. So for a private organization to be signing a contract with a public entity, and that private organization then has a certain amount of control over the, the tax dollars. And there's no public accountability there. So I have a problem with that. You know, there, if, if we're gonna be held accountable as we should be, then the private organization, the corporation has to be as well.
So what is it that they control when, when, when this organization, very specifically in D11, what are the things that they get to make decisions on that sort of take things out of your hands, I guess?
Well, I mean, one of the big things is, was bargaining. The interest-based bargaining that, that happened every year for teacher salaries. And that would take, oh my goodness, it's 60 hours?
Yeah, a little more than that. So we have a master agreement, which is a contractual agreement with the Colorado Springs Educators Association that has been put together over 50-plus years, several votes. Essentially, that contractual agreement trumps even board policies. So everything, including the day-to-day operations of the district, what teachers can do, what principals can do, are all captured. And we got to follow that contractual agreement to a T. And sometimes, as a school district, based on the needs of our students, students come first. The education of our students come first. We need to act quickly, swiftly. We gotta be innovative in this day and age. And it restricts, the master agreement restricts the speed of operations. Everything has to be time-consuming. It has to be worked out through several meetings before we can come to a decision. As some of those decisions last months.
Now, as far as the benefits that they provide to teachers, you know, how is that, how does that get represented when there's not a collective bargaining agreement?
I, I assume your meaning, explain to me what you mean by benefits.
Well, there must be a benefit to, to, to having a union. Unions represent a body of people.
Compensation salaries. Yeah, compensation salaries. The, the CSCA is the sole representative of teachers in the district. There's no choice for teachers. So if CSCA doesn't fit Teacher A, but it fits Teacher B, then Teacher A has to submit to what Teacher B is getting. So about 40% of our teachers are not heard in the district because they're not members of the union. And that's a problem. We want to make sure that all teachers have a voice in that. I'll give you an example of the, the speed at which we can do things. Let's say we have a teacher position opening up in the middle of summer. Nobody's in the classroom in the middle of summer, but the CSCA gets the opportunity to have somebody on the interview committee, okay? Well, there's nobody there. And so if we want to interview somebody for a specific teaching position, we can't necessarily do that until we get permission, as it were, from CSCA to be able to actually interview this teacher for a position that's going to be starting in August. We can't do that until August because there's nobody in the schools at that time. So the CSCA has to be notified and then they get an option of being a part of that or not. And we have to wait for them to do that. And then if we have a really good candidate, we would have to pass on them because we haven't heard anything yet.
So what are the implications of this decision? Does the CSCA, you know, do they go away? Is this just part of their responsibilities? What, what, what does it look like moving forward?
Well, CSCA, the union, is still going to be there. But the master agreement, which is that contractual agreement between the board and the union, is going to set to expire in, at the end of June 2025. We will put together an employee handbook that will provide the assurance for our staff about some of the rights that you talked about. And what I would like to point out is when you go and look at our track record of this board over the last three years, we have taken care of our staff. We have provided them the highest historic compensation pay raises ever seen in District 11. We provided the best healthcare benefits. We assured them their working conditions are going to be the excellent working conditions. We protected their classroom environment. So that will continue going forth. And our track record indicates that we will provide the assurances our teachers need.
So whenever there's controversial issues like this, there tends to be misinformation, people are heated. What are some things that you would like to address, you know, to the public to say, you know, this is the accurate information, this is what's going on, as opposed to some things that might be out there that are, you know, confusing people and misleading people?
One of the things in today's society that I think can be a problem for people is social media. In that you can get behind a keyboard and you can type out whatever it is you want and people pretty much say 100% of everything that's on their minds. We never used to do that before and people were more civil to each other. At the same time, misinformation was controlled better. And so I would encourage people that if they are hearing things that don't seem right or not making sense in their, in their minds, or they have concerns that they don't believe everything they read on social media, if they have questions, they should contact us. We're happy to meet with people. We're happy to talk to them anytime.
They can get your contact info at the website, d11.org. But real quick, what's, what's like one major misconception that you've been dealing with?
That we're going to cut their pay and they're not gonna be able to keep their leave or their retirement's gonna go away. All of these things are unequivocally patently false. And people actually believe it. And I, I struggle with that because that's absolutely the opposite of what we want for our teachers.
Okay, we have just about a minute left. What's next? What's the next step as this moves forward? Because last night was really just the beginning, right?
It starts, it starts now. So we have tasked the superintendent and his team to come up with what we're calling an employee handbook, which includes the entire employee family. It's not just teachers, it's ESPs or educational support professionals as well as our exec pros. There's no more us versus them in our system. We're family. And that's, that's where we're heading. And so we want everybody's voice to be valued and to have a seat at the table.
So what do you think? Is this good for D11? Is it good for the students? Is it, is it not? Well, the process is just starting. So if you're interested, don't complain. Don't just go on social media. Find out what's going on, get involved, get to the School Board meetings, be part of the solution to educate our children in this region. When we come back with Parth Malpakam and Jill Hayfley, D11 School Board members, Jill's gonna be talking about getting the cell phones out of schools. I'm Hyam Goldman, the Watchman. We'll be right back. Good. It was tough. It's tough to cover that. It was funny before when she was saying, you think 12 minutes is too long? I'm like, no, it's probably a few, two hours on a community. It was like one of those community programs where you can just talk at length, but, okay. So.
Well, when you think about it, there is so much that we can talk about. So having like a bullet point or something like that helps out. What are the critical things that we should address? You know, when, after you finish talking, oh, I didn't forgot to mention that.
Yeah, that's why it's good to have the bullet points because we're always like, ah, missed that point. That's why I do this. So, okay, so we'll have, so we'll have about four, four and a half minutes to cover this. So I'll ask you, you know, let, let's talk about the why. I'll do a why question and a how question.
Okay.
Okay?
She is really good at this.
I'm really good at the why. You should do the how.
But really good, the cellphone thing.
I know. The first is, you know, what, what are the issues? And then how does it get implemented? And what if students don't want, you know, want that or whatever? Like, is this something they can? You know, especially if they're 18.
Yeah.
Well, we all know, we don't like to, we want our phones.
That's true.
And then at the end of this, I'll, I'll say thank you to both of you. Just real quick out. And I gotta, I gotta throw it to a pre-record. Yeah. You know Jim Miller, who ran for mayor? You know Jim?
I do not know Jim.
He ran for mayor in the last election and he's, he's, he would get up, because we were 12, you know, mayoral candidates. And I do the voter guide, so I was going to, you know, going to the forums and stuff. And, and he would get up and he'd be like, I'm Jim Miller. I'm just a guy. Yeah, I don't know a lot, but I know this. And it was like, and it was like hilarious. And, and I, I said, I gotta get this guy on the radio. Like, this is radio gold. So he closes off, we gave him something called the Peak Rants. And he's like our Andy Rooney at the end of 60 Minutes.
Wow.
Remember, remember that? So he's sort of our grumpy, sarcastic, you know, a little bit of humor at the end of the news program. So, so we, yeah, it's just, it was.
So he's been, he's become a fixture.
He's, yeah, he's becoming sort of a little bit of a celebrity in the community as a guy. But he really, he's unfiltered. He just says, he's a Marine, he's just not a believer. That's not my shot of whiskey. But, you know, but he respects, but he respects conservative values. Like he's a conservative. He was a, yeah, he was a one-issue candidate regarding sex offenders and stuff. He really wanted that. Welcome back to the Peak News. I'm Hyam Goldman, the Watchman. It's Education Day and we have D11 School Board members Parth Malpakam and Jill Hayfley here. And in this final segment with them, I'm going to talk about getting cell phones out of schools. Jill, we'll start with you. You know, my team obvious, but nothing's ever obvious when you get into the details. Why, why do you think it's important to, to limit or totally restrict cellphone usage during school hours?
Let me tell you, from personal experience, being in the classroom with high school kids, these kids would walk into class and they'd hide their phones as best they could. Or they would get them out and you'd see them leaning over and they weren't paying attention to anything except for the floor. And so you knew they were doing what they were supposed to do. They were looking at their cell phones. Sometimes you'd catch them watching YouTube videos or playing video games on their cell phones. Or they're texting people in, in other classrooms just down the hall or maybe even across the city in, in other schools. But they wouldn't talk to the person sitting next to them. You know, I would tell them, put your phone away and talk to the person, that living, breathing creature sitting right next to you. And they wouldn't, they wouldn't do it. They were afraid to do it. They didn't know how to actually look somebody in the eye and have a conversation with them. So you tell them to put their cellphone away and, and they wouldn't be able to do it. We had, we had one kid lose her cellphone during class. Teacher took it and she, the girl started crying, I mean uncontrollably crying. So we had to send her down to the office. And she shook, she physically shook because her phone wasn't with her. It was 10 feet away on the teacher's desk. This is a problem. So if kids aren't paying attention much to their classwork, they're paying attention to their cell phones, it's no wonder some of their scores aren't doing so well. So I campaigned on that issue to get rid of cell phones out of the classroom.
Okay, and is this, this is now policy?
It is.
Okay. I, I was trying to remember because with all the different school boards, I don't remember all the news items. So how have you gone about implementing this and how, you know, difficult or easy has it been? And what is it that's implemented? What is, what is the rule?
Yeah, it started at the beginning of the school year in August. The clear directive to the superintendent was that we do not want cell phones in the learning environment in the classrooms. So he was authorized to come up with a clear plan as to how to remove cell phones. And one thing I'm really proud of is District 11 is the first school district out here in this region and probably the state of Colorado that has adopted a clear message throughout.
So do they have to put them in their lockers? Do they have to, can they be in their bag? Like, what's the rule?
Well, we purchased, every child has got a pouch, which is called the Yontra pouch. And kids have to put their cell phones in that Yontra pouch and it's locked at the beginning of the school day, at the end of the school day, or when they exit the schools, they can open that magnetic pouch and access their cell phones. So in the schools, they don't have any access to cell phones.
And how is it being kept accountable? What's the penalty if they break it?
So if, if they break it, the, the teacher no longer has to be the one providing a punishment, if you will. It goes to the administration. Teacher goes to the laptop, sends a message to administration. The administrator comes and gets the kid and the phone. So the teacher is removed from that. So now the teacher is free to teach and kids are free to learn.
And so how, how has it been received?
You know, initially, we thought it wasn't gonna be so great. And, and kids, there was a pushback initially. But when I visited schools, I would have kids come up to me and literally tell me, this is a quote, "I can breathe again and I'm liking talking to my friends at lunch." And so that, that to me spoke volumes.
And that is the biggest difference that we are seeing now. When you go into our schools, students are engaging with each other and with their teachers as well. Previously, that lack of engagement contributed to a lack of achievement in the classrooms.
So you've seen it, you, you've, they've accepted it and they're seeing a benefit from it?
They have because it's district-wide. It's not just one school over another.
And discipline issues in schools have also decreased.
Okay. Well, we're done. Well, we're done. We got through that. Thanks so much to Parth Malpakam and Jill Haley, D-11 school board members. Go to d11.com to get in contact with.
Work.
Excuse me. Dot org. D11, thank you for correcting that. D11.org. And now Jim Miller and the Peak Rants. Just a guy.
That's awesome.
Inspires people to talk. So, so we have a few minutes, and then I have a two-minute close, and then we're done.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I mean, you're, did I, did I say thank you? Did I think I, I said thank you to you? I don't know if I gave you, I was running. I got a cue from the booth that was off-timing, so I was a little confused.
Because we're talking too long.
No, I said I had an extra minute.
Oh.
I knew I didn't, and I just told I did. Jane's little math challenge today. When you do this day after day after day, the timings are like grilled indie.
Yep, yep. I remember.
So what were you doing? You were the, just DJ, you know?
Yeah, weekend DJ. So it was rarely live. I would be coming in after school and, and recording.
You do the voice tracks?
Yeah.
So it was all, it was still, back then, it was all pre-recorded, digitized and stuff?
Yeah, everything, point, click, speak, save, that's it. But if the weather changed, then I'd run in and have to redo my weather tracks. And then when we would have remotes, I would be live. So it was fun. I enjoyed it. It was just, I didn't want to be on my deathbed wishing I had done something that interested me.
Yeah.
And it turned into a 15-year gig. So, it was good. I, I loved it. But it was time to do something else. So.
And did you have a, a teaching degree? Was that your?
Yeah, I have a bachelor's degree in history.
Oh, okay.
And then I have a master's degree in sport administration. So I wanted to diversify a little bit if I wanted to get out of teaching and still, still do something, which I, I could still do. I just, I'm enjoying being on the board right now.
You know, my background was history, political science.
Oh, is that right?
Pre-law, and then decided my junior year, no, and then got into communications.
Smart.
So it's the same thing. Storytelling.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
And then Bible teaching. So then, you know, I became a believer, then it just became other stories to tell, you know?
That's great. That's awesome. Good for you.
It's always about the story. And so that's what, you know, that's what this is every day, figuring out what's the story, how to tell it quickly, properly. Journalism's, like, journalism's, it's hard. Like, we've lost what it is. And people don't expect it. Like, people, you know, you get upset about, why are you talking about that? Or why, it's like, you know what? That's our, our job is to put the information in front of you, not to tell you what's true.
Right.
Not to tell, like, people just want, tell me what the, with our voter guide, I've been told, like, your voter guide has too much information. It's like, you know what? Research the candidates, make it known. No, we want to be told who to vote for.
That's right. That's right. That's what technology does for you.
Thanks for joining us for the Peak. We've finished another week, and we so appreciate you and ask you to let others know about the Peak News. That, that's mostly as a grassroots organization, you telling other people, sharing things, checking us out on Facebook, sharing those posts on X, letting people know that we exist. Because what we found out, especially during the elections, is, you know, people have lost faith in the media. And I have to tell you, for good reason, because we're not doing our job. But here at the Peak, we're trying to bring back real journalism. And in fact, well, we've started a nonprofit foundation called the Peak News Educational Foundation, and we're working actually to put it into the D-11 school district and offer it to homeschoolers that next year, 2025, to, to be implementing and giving a journalistic ethics and media vocational training program, plugging into an internship here. But as we're working on that, we offer internships here already. If you're older, too old for an internship, and just want to be a citizen journalist, join us on that. Go on thepeak.news and learn about us. And also, if you can, give to the educational foundation. It's that time of year for giving to 501(c)(3)'s. So we'd love that support as we seek to raise up a new generation of integrish journalists so that we can have faith in the media again. Well, we air Monday through Thursday, so we're off tomorrow. Dirk Cobb's of North Publishing has the Southern Colorado Business Forum and Digest here at 3:00 PM. And on Monday, for our Business and Culture Day, we're having Dirk Cobb's on the Peak to talk about the state of local business as we head into 2025. And then on Tuesday, Government and Politics Day, we'll be saying the quiet stuff out loud about local election integrity with cybersecurity and forensic elections expert Mark Cook. Now, stick around for Larry Elder Show coming up next on The Answer and on our website, thepeak.news. Check out our 150-plus podcasts, all hyper-local about our region. Great guests, great information. The Peak, we say the quiet stuff out loud. Help us to say it even louder for such a time as this. Have a great weekend. Shalom.